We are good whenever you are.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 7, 2023 zoning committee ZOCO. We will be holding a hybrid. I'm just going to jump into these statements and then we can get going this opening remarks. We will be holding this hybrid public meeting with the enabled remote electronic participation as legally authorized by the Code of Virginia per the Planning Commission's Electronic Meeting Policy adopted July 7, 2022. Members of ZOCO are participating here in person, and I don't think we have any virtual ZOCO members.
Do you want to add some?
No, I think we're good. Everyone was busy. Daniel could potentially join, so give me a heads up if he does. He was under the weather, but he might be able to join. Members of the public may attend here or in person or electronic by using Microsoft Teams link provided in the ZOCO webpage, the county's events calendar, and email notification for planning commissioners joining virtually. Internet connection, call on the phone. If you lose internet connection, please keep your phones and devices muted and your cameras off. Turn off your video feed. I'm going to scroll this a little bit faster than usual. We can have public comments at the end, so let's plan on that if there are any public members that wish to talk. You always have the option to provide written comments via the link if provided in the Teams. All written comments, whether paper or online, will be shared with the Planning Commission. I will call speakers at the end of the meeting. I will ask staff to let them know if we have virtual attendees or in person. Members of the public attending virtually will speak first. When virtual attendees are called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon. That is located on the meeting command bar. Moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Lastly, this is a public forum. Today's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with today's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Freedom of Information Act requirement. Great. All right. With that out of the way, I'm Olivia Sarley with the Planning Commission. I'll be chairing the ZOCO meeting tonight, and at the table with me...
I'm Olivia Sontag with the Planning Division.
I'm Andrea Gawa, the hall intern.
Jim?
Jim Lantel, Planning Commission.
Chair of the Board of Planning Commission.
Cliff Hogan, and I'm with the City Division.
And online, we have Mr. Matuzik.
Hi, everyone.
Mr. Matuzik with the Planning Division.
Is that it for now? Any other staff joining us? All right. I think with that, we can kick it out. Ms. Sontag, or are you going to go first?
Our first item is the technical corrections.
Technical, you're on first.
Yeah, so this is a zoning text amendment to take through a batch of essentially line item corrections to the zoning ordinance. These are all from a catalog that we maintain as we discover errors in the zoning ordinance. And this is, I think, well, it's a continuation of the work we started earlier this year. We took forward our first tax amendment in May, which corrected partially half of the catalog we had at that time. And then in July, we took forward one to update the ordinance to reflect changes to the telecom regulations that were actually adopted into the Code of Virginia in 2018. And so this, again, is just really just a continuation of moving through that volume of work. This particular amendment is, again, there are mostly citation errors, grammatic errors, spelling errors, some digraphmatic errors. There are two clarifications that involve a substantial amount of texts either being written or introduced into the zoning ordinance. They are the regulations we have for community care, ever suites. And there is a new section that's being added to the parking ordinance concerning off-site parking for religious institutions. And, but again, like, these are not policy changes. These are really just to improve, like, the administration and the practical application of the zoning ordinance as far as, like, interpretations, issuing permits, and for, like, you know, our general public to be able to better read those ordinance without assistance from staff when necessary. So I'm happy to, you know, go through any of these, any particular amendments. Like I said, a lot of them are line item edits to the text. Yeah, so that's... That's a little dry and tedious, but...
No, I read through them, and it's like, yeah, okay, fine. Yeah, whatever.
I have jokes.
Yeah, so...
I'm glad we're doing it. I mean, this is, and I know that every couple of years, we go through this exercise, so it's definitely worth doing. I guess what we do is we just sort of inventory them and then bring them all up at once every year or two.
Yeah, we thought it's best to... I mean, once we work through our catalog, there's probably about a dozen left, just like a dozen different items. Mostly, it's a lot of stuff in Article 3, so it's about building a permit or bulk density setback. And Article 2 is very challenged. It's been hacked up and put back together so many times over the past 50, 60 years that it's... Yeah, I mean, I tell people, it's like someone tried to build a flying machine out of kind of a container wagon. So it's like, it flies, but I'm not going to buy a ticket on it, so... But yeah, so like, it's mostly those, and then there's a couple other ones that are, like, concerning density and for the residential cluster developments and/or modifications to density in the residential cluster developments and the unified residential development. So, and those will probably come for, probably being those for early in 2024. And then moving forward, we've... I have to have discussions with the zoning material how we want to, like, handle it because, you know, we're frequently finding new ones. I mean, for instance, like, some of the changes or the amendments in this particular one, like, there are several that were from the missing middle, expanded housing options that, these are just oversights that were, you know, we didn't notice that until we started actually going through the, you know, like, the text, how we're going to interpret it, how we're going to build the permit and all of these things. And so, so yeah, so I think, I don't know if we'll be doing them quarterly, you know, we just haven't gotten that far yet, so...
Yeah, that was a good catch on the maximum versus minimum. I think that was, I think it was 10. And then the other thing, what was the other thing that I thought? Oh, I had a quick question just for my clarification more than anything else. There's a 600-foot distance limitation with the religious church parking requirement. I think if I recall correctly, it was 600 feet. Does that number come from anywhere, or is that just, you know, some random sort of...
So that came from the original, so the new language that's in 1433B3, it's in that strike-up, so that has been carried forward from, I mean, it's been in the zoning ordinance since...
Right. I'd love to, like, you know, sometime, sorry, I don't mean to add here... But it's just there's some numbers in there, like, the 600 feet, like, you know, does that make sense? Is that logical, you know, and is it something that we ought to revisit? You know, just, and I'm sure you're going through and thinking about this. At some point, someone thought that 600 feet was an adequate number, but, you know, do we know why? Right.
It was just flooded from the original one.
Right.
So we just made it up. I really don't think there's any real, any research behind it. It's sort of, oh, somebody else did it, so we'll do it too.
Right. And I don't know that that's something that we need to fix because I don't know that it's broken. But, you know, it seems so arbitrary, right? Like, if there's a 605-foot parking lot away, 605 feet away from the church, like, is that now no longer qualified? You know what I mean? Like, there's these restrictions that you're kind of like, I get it, but, like, really?
His price is not, like, 666 or something.
Right, right.
Exactly. Yeah. Anywho, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I can definitely look at this, see how it got there. Yeah, yeah, again, like, you know, these are, like, you're right, these are just arbitrary figures that, you know, I mean...
We've inherited.
Pretty much everything. I mean, like, you know, like, why 25 feet from the street? Why not 20 or 18 or, you know, so... But, but yeah, I mean, I can definitely look into that. I mean, the reason, you know, like, since, like, we're not doing any policy changes, that's why it's still the 600 feet in there. But yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, I'm kind of curious. I'll figure that out.
Well, you know, right?
I know.
That's the problem. You end up going down this rabbit hole. Any other thoughts or comment?
This was run by I assume the county attorney's office.
Yeah, they reviewed...
That's all I needed.
Yeah, yes, part of the review of the staff report.
Thanks, Mr. Hogan. I think that's all for tonight.
All right. Thanks. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go. The welcome key, yeah.
I can imagine anyone that has questions. Thank you very much. All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
And share my screen. We're going to keep this, this next item, the elder care update, fairly brief. But, there we go. So we visited the zoning committee last month in October and covered this proposal for a zoning ordinance and a Neighborhoods Form-Based Code amendment that would address the affordability requirements for elder care uses. So we heard, you know, a lot of great feedback, asking staff, you know, about the kind of feasibility of onsite units. I know, I guess just for the benefit of anyone who wasn't at that last meeting, just a quick recap on the background here. Elder care uses were first introduced to the zoning ordinance in November 2019. They were inadvertently excluded from the, both of the form-based codes. So this September, those elder care uses were inserted into both of those form-based codes. So you can see in the table on the screen that, for example, independent living was categorized under, within the residential use category under household living. And then the assisted living facilities, continuing care, nursing homes are also housed under the residential use category, but in that group living section. So one of the challenges that we've continued to hear is one, we know that elder care units' costs are extremely high. So we currently don't have affordability requirements in the commercial code, so that's not really the subject of this particular amendment. We're only focusing on the Neighborhoods Code. But currently in the code, we do have two different options for providing affordable housing. However, residential development must provide onsite committed affordable units. And then commercial development has the option to provide a cash contribution. So what we're finding is that elder care development, while it's currently categorized under residential development, it's really not compatible with multifamily, the way that we apply affordable housing for multifamily development. So what this amendment does is it re-categorizes, it creates this new category for elder care uses that's separate from the residential use category. And then it would fall under this kind of commercial or what we're renaming as non-residential development category, where it would have access to this cash contribution option. So that is kind of the proposal in a nutshell. We did hear last time, you know, the desire for onsite committed affordable units. So we've done a little bit more research, quite a bit more research, and just discussing kind of other jurisdictions' policies. For example, Alexandria was one that some of the commissioners had mentioned at the last meeting, just to see how they're implementing elder care affordability. We also looked at kind of some of the current obstacles for changing our own zoning ordinance. So the one thing that we found is it would require a change at the state code level and support from the governor in order to change our zoning ordinance, which is codified in the state code. So this, this proposal to allow for the cash contribution option would essentially make the access for meeting those affordability requirements compatible with what's currently offered in the zoning ordinance, which, which currently does allow elder care to meet onsite affordability by providing that cash contribution option. So we know that further study is needed to kind of address different subsidies and metrics for applying onsite committed affordable units in elder care projects. But this current model for affordability modeled after multifamily requirements just is not, is not compatible, given the, all of the services that are required for these, these projects. And I think the one other thing to note is that, you know, an age-restricted multifamily development would still fall under that residential use category and would still be required to provide those onsite calves. But if it then, you know, if it needs the definition of independent living, which means it has all those onsite services like dining and housekeeping, laundering services, then it would be eligible, it falls under this elder care use category and would be eligible for that cash contribution option, which ultimately just makes elder care projects on Columbia Pike, you know, within the form-based code, much more attainable than they are today, which is our goal with this proposal. So I think the only other thing I wanted to jump to really quick is just the updated timeline for this one. We are targeting the request to advertise going to the board in December now. And then we'd be looking at those amendments going to the Planning Commission and the county board in February.
Thank you.
So happy to take questions. Matt Matuzik is on the line as well, in case there are any specific questions for him. Matt, feel free to share anything else that I might have missed.
This is something that we had a lot of discussion about in Planning Commission, not the last one, the one before, because someone's lost the topic. I don't know if you followed that or listened to it.
We did, especially after, after the fact.
Right, okay. So you're familiar that the Planning Commission really is wrestling with this whole issue. I just want to make sure, because when you come before us in February, you're going to hear the same things. How are we going to do this? You know, it just, this is like, you're good, I think we're going to see this as a stopgap. But it's still not resolving the main issue, which is how do we incentivize having more affordability in our elder care facilities? Because they're hugely expensive. There's vast numbers of elders simply counter for places like that, even though they may need those type of services, but they can't do it. So, you know, it's, right now, they're all pitched to the high end. So it's, it's an issue.
Yeah, and I think part of the struggle too is, I can't remember how many onsite calves sunrise would have been required. Was it one or two? One. So under, currently under the form-based code, the way that those calculations were, you know, they'd have to provide, provide anywhere from 20 to 30% of their net new units as onsite affordable units. So again, this is kind of a stopgap. We, this, we're not within the scope right now to reassess those onsite calf requirements specific to elder care. But certainly, we're hoping that, you know, now standardizing the form-based codes with the access that elder care projects have elsewhere in the county, so that they're on kind of a level playing field, then eventually, when we can address elder care affordability, it can be addressed countywide and inclusive of Columbia Pike.
That's what we want, is this countywide.
Right, right. Okay. And I don't want to belabor whatever points you guys made already, because I was, I was gone for a little bit. But I remember the first Planning Commission meeting that I came to, it was actually one of the sunrise buildings, North Arlington. And they said that they couldn't have onsite their affordable units because it was going to be too expensive, so they were going to push them to South Arlington. Then, when the South Arlington came on, you know, sort of plan, they said, no, we can't do it because in fact, it's going to have to be connected to, you know, it's because they provide meal plans, the housekeeping. So it's not just about putting a unit in there, it's all the associated costs that come with that. So I'm just wondering, and again, I guess this is a recurring issue. I mean, you, you can say, hey, you need 20 to 30%, but then they're just going to do the cash contribution because then the meal plan and everything else is not covered. And so how do you, how do you address that? Right, and I think too, you know, the kind of, the study that's needed to figure out what that, that sweet spot is, that percentage onsite calf requirement is, is, was not something that we, you know, tried to tackle with this particular amendment. So we're not even, we're not proposing right now to allow elder care to pursue either calf or cash because we know that the onsite calf, as it's currently written in the code, is just not anywhere realistic. I think, you know, we, in some of our discussions with, you know, representatives of other elder care development projects, you know, within the county and outside, is that these units are anywhere from 8,000 to 12,000 a month for, you know, inclusive of all of those services. And then to subsidize that for what Arlington would require, you know, 30 years, just for one unit, is $3 to $4 million. So it's a big subsidy that we're asking these developers for right now. That's just, it's not, it's not an any way.
Yet part of me is like, well, they're also charging these people quite a bit, the ones that, you know, that can't afford it.
Absolutely.
And I feel like there should be, or I'm sure there's some sort of breaking point. Do you know of any other counties or sort of municipalities where they have been able to figure out some sort of equation that more or less makes sense?
So we've heard about some projects in Alexandria that have been successful providing onsite calves. However, they have the ability to negotiate with bonus density and other kind of incentives where, as we don't have those options in the form-based code, when you opt into this optional zoning tool, that's the density you get, and we don't have the ability to do any other negotiations outside of that. So that's the other kind of difficult part of the form-based code versus, you know, site plans. But the other piece of information that we received was that since their most recent elder care affordable housing update, I believe generally, it depends on where it is in the county and what's being proposed and what kind of elder care use is being proposed, but they were asking for 2% of onsite committed affordable units. And I believe since that, since the implementation of that policy, they've not seen any projects proposed or successful.
Yeah, and I think part of where I think City of Alexandria is heading into, which I think is the right direction, is that they're shifting away from even the semantics of calling this a onsite calf, or rather, an onsite subsidy that is more comprehensive and inclusive of all the various costs that are plugged into that monthly charge for residents. So I think there, there's this productive conversation to be had about just a framework for the solution. What I think we still have to solve, what is that right answer countywide? Is it the same number? And I think, as you'll see in the staff report, what is the discount? How many units does it apply to, or residents maybe is the right answer, and then for how long? Typically, I think calves in Arlington County are set for 30 years. Alexandria, I think, is using a 40-year window, which does change things pretty drastically. But even if we were to, I think, agree on one of those numbers or a combination of thereof, the pure mechanism of verification of income, which changes drastically for senior residents that no longer have a typical stream of income, so we get into assets and savings. And how do you select, right? Because you have a very broad spectrum of residents that might be vying for those limited elder care units that are coming online because we haven't seen really any being added for decades. So I think what we're trying to do with this proposal is first kind of crack the door open a little bit, so there is at least a slight path while we continue to work on the affordability, which we know still has to be addressed on a countywide level.
And I think to Matt's point as well, you know, currently in the form-based code, we would be asking for, you know, 60% average median income, you know, subsidy for these units. And at 8,000 to $12,000 per month, that does not make it affordable. So there's a, there's a whole lot more that we need to study and a much heavier subsidy and maybe probably even multiple subsidy outlets or inputs in order to get true affordability out of these elder care units. So it's unfortunately another just first step and will be a multi-step process. But we do think it will, you know, right now, what we're seeing is there is no path forward for elder care projects on Columbia Pike. And so we need to at least have some option, and then we can kind of dig in a little bit more.
I mean, personally, it's fine, because I agree that we need more. We're in such a deficit for elder care at every level that anyone that we build is worth doing. So I'm not arguing that. It's just that the larger issue is, does have to be addressed. You know, right now, we're moving ahead in ways that we will be able to at least maybe meet the needs of wealthier people, of elders. And that's a real need. I mean, we have to have, have facilities that do address every, every demographic. Whether it's the poor people, the less, and in fact, you know, at this point, it's even up to middle class people. It's just almost affordable at any level. So it's how do we work that, figure that out.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah, I will sort of echo my colleagues here and just say, the more information that you can bring to the table at our next meeting, the more you're prepared with facts, data, options, ideas, you know, and you can sort of direct us sort of into the right conversation, I think, in a safe time and make the conversation more productive. Because as you can see, there's just unbound amounts of interest on this, but not a lot of information. And that's what makes it tricky, admittedly, but yeah, you'll have sole support from the commission on this too, so that's good.
I can just mention one last thing.
Yeah.
I think, you know, to your point about coming with more options, at least from the last meeting that we had last week, what I think there's an appetite for in the commission is just more creative sort of thinking. Like, I feel like we've been operating in a vacuum, like, what else could we explore that perhaps seems out of the box? But hey, something better than nothing that, that, or within the framework that hasn't been working.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you all. Yes, I think that's our goal, is to really just provide you guys as much information as possible at the Planning Commission meeting. I know this is not a full solution, but it's a step forward, so it's just, yeah.
Agreed. Great. Can we wrap up this item on the agenda and go to our item number three? Seeing no objections around the table, we can now move to item number three on our agenda, which is also form-based code, and it's the green building standards.
Yes, so that will be me as well. Share my screen.
I assume both of these issues are going to the AUG.
Yes, the elder care item went to the AUG last month, and green building will be going to them next Wednesday.
And how did people react to the presentation last time?
The AUG was very supportive, I think, you know, still just, yeah. I think, you know, there's just an understanding that we haven't seen elder care projects on the Pike and that this is...
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
But we'll, we'll make sure that's summarized in the report to you guys as well. But we'll, we'll make sure that's summarized in the report to you guys as well. So this is another zoning ordinance amendment. There aren't any changes to the zoning ordinance, but there are, we are proposing changes to Appendix A and B, the commercial and neighborhoods Form Based Codes. So this addresses the green building standards in both. So just to cover a little bit of history and the project scope, when the commercial Form Based Code was adopted in 2003, there were no, there were no required green building standards as part of, you know, those development projects. We still ask for, for applicants to submit a checklist, and of course, encourage them to, you know, provide sustainability in their development projects, but again, it's not a requirement. And then 10 years later, when the Neighborhoods Form Based Code was adopted, it required generally lead silver for any kind of, you know, multifamily projects, some of our more dense building envelopes on the Pike, and then lower for some of our kind of small apartment townhouse forms of development. So a quick timeline on this, this is following the same path as the elder care item. We're targeting the request to advertise going to the board this December, and then those amendments coming back to them in February. So we'll be looking to visit the planning commission in, in February as well. So we began reviewing this, you know, doing a review of the green building standards in the Form Based Code earlier this year. Some of this outreach, you know, included talking to our current planning staff, who, you know, kind of worked with the, the, the green building incentive policy on site, site plans elsewhere in the county. So just hearing a little bit from them on what kind of incentive tools are used, and different bonus densities that are pursued. We also talked with our inspection services division to understand how, you know, does the IVC, you know, force or require green building standards, and how is it kind of adapting to new technologies? And then we also talked with our housing staff and CPHD, you know, we do have fully, you know, affordable, affordable housing projects proposed in Columbia Pike, and we just wanted to understand what kind of green building certifications they are targeting or are required to target. So for example, in order to, they're, they're not necessarily required to pursue green building certifications, but that's one way to earn credits, and that's probably one of the more frequently targeted options for earning those credits. So if they do opt into that, they are required to meet lead gold or earthcraft gold as a minimum standard for those projects. So we have seen a couple of projects on the Pike that have targeted that lead or earthcraft gold standard. And then we've also been, you know, since early this year, working closely with DES staff in the green building program, who review any kind of Form Based Code projects, review the scorecards for those projects. And then they also, you know, simultaneously are, are working on some updates to the green building incentive policy. So we also felt it was important to reach out to some of our counterparts in adjoining counties, so we did meet with some planners in Fairfax, just to understand, you know, current requirements that they have, especially for development that's kind of compatible in scale to what we see in Columbia Pike, you know, ground story, commercial, about six stories. We also talked to the City of Alexandria, and then to architecture firms that we have worked with a handful of times on different Columbia Pike Form Based Code projects. So they're familiar with the requirements and just kind of the general form that's prescribed, and, and do have, you know, scorecards and information to pull from on where points can be earned on the Pike and where it's a little more difficult. So this is just to orient us to kind of the extent of, of both the commercial and the Neighborhoods Form Based Codes. All of those commercial centers are shown in the yellow, yellowish-orange areas on the screen, and then the Neighborhoods areas are in blue. So I'm just, I'm going to run through our key findings. These were all kind of explained in much greater detail in the, in the memo that we provided. But generally, we found that there is room for growth in the current standards that are required in the Neighborhoods Form Based Code. And then again, the IVC doesn't, you know, force or influence green building standards necessarily, but they are continuing to, you know, work on adapting to those new technologies to make sure it doesn't, you know, blockade any sustainability, kind of progressive sustainability measures for buildings. We also learned that it was very important to offer a variety of different methods. We've heard that lead in particular can be really expensive and can be a long process, so allowing programs like earthcraft, which is also an option in both the GVIP and also a certification option for affordable housing projects, was important. So you'll see in some of the language that we'll look at in a minute, that we did extend this to kind of other compatible or equivalent certification options, so that there is the flexibility if we get a project that, for example, wants to do passive house, or, or something of that nature. We do have the ability to work with our green building program staff in DES to ensure that whatever certification program is being proposed is compatible with the goals that we have for lead and earthcraft certification. And then the other trend that we're hearing is that other jurisdictions are really shifting towards building performance more than anything, more than kind of a prescriptive type path. So I think what you'll see, we're proposing is a bit of a hybrid between some prescriptive and some performance measures. And then again, just an update on lead. So the, there is a version five that's, the beta version is supposed to be released soon. That timeline is a little bit uncertain right now, so everything that we're reviewing and the, you know, conditions that will then be updated as part of that, we'll be referencing lead version four still, until we have a chance to review and understand what this lead version five will be implementing. And then the other thing we're seeing, we're continuing to see, is that even in the commercial Form Based Code, where we don't currently have requirements for certifications, we still do see some people voluntarily providing either, you know, lead certification or lead silver, because it's just becoming kind of more desirable to have efficient buildings do sometimes make for cheaper buildings. So it's good to see that those are being targeted even without incentives. We also learned that Columbia Pike projects, you know, even though they're not on a metro corridor, their access to public transportation does make them score fairly high in the transportation and location sections of those scorecards. There's a 10-point difference between silver and gold certification level, and this can be a challenging jump, but we are seeing from past scorecards that they're just on the verge of being able to meet lead gold. So we do think that, especially if it's targeted early in the design process, that it is, it is attainable. And then again, the earthcraft system, we've heard, is just generally less expensive to administer. There's also a consultant that designed fairly early in the process, and that's, it sounds like that's really helpful in kind of moving through that process swiftly. And then just quickly through some of these, again, the earthcraft requires that technical advisor, and what we've heard from some of our own DES staff is that that allows us to place a greater emphasis on performance. So again, we wanted to make sure that this was an option for people to meet their certification requirement. Also, the Energy Star certification is a, is an important baseline to consider. And then again, having that variety of certification options for some of the smaller scale development that we see, or, you know, major renovations. For example, Barcroft, which was reviewed back in either June or July, I think they used the National Green Building Standard as their certification option. And then Green Home Choice right now, just currently listed as an option in the Form Based Code, is not currently in operation, and it's, again, has an uncertain future right now. So all the more importance to just have a variety of certification options open. So here is a summary of the proposed updates. In the far left-hand side, we have our building envelope standards, which are kind of our, it's based off of your, generally, your street frontage type. So up top here, we have our two more kind of multifamily mixed-use type building envelopes in the Neighborhoods Form Based Code, and then we have our, our two, our Main Street and our Avenue DES sites in the, in the commercial Form Based Code, and then down to our kind of townhouse and duplex detached type frontages. And then in this middle column, you can see what the existing standards are. So again, none currently in the commercial Form Based Code, and then you'll see that lead silver certification, or the lead or earthcraft certification for VHDA projects, and then it bumps down to just lead or earthcraft certification, or that equivalent option in some of our lower density options. So what we're proposing for our most dense sites are this lead gold or earthcraft gold and/or that equivalent certification option. But we also have a couple of baseline requirements that again, kind of get more of that performance-based review. So we're, as you'll see in the next slide, we're looking at an energy optimization requirement, and then some additional prerequisites that help to meet some of the community energy plan priorities. And then down to our, our less dense options, we have the lead or earthcraft certification or equivalent certification, and then for these, we're recommending that they, they meet Energy Star, Star certification as well. So this again summarizes the energy optimization options. These mirror the current GVIP requirements that were, had a kind of a clause for an update this summer. So these mirror that latest update that was, that took effect this summer. So one of these performance options would be required, and then we have listed over here these additional prerequisites, which again, are very similar to what's currently required in the GVIP, which again, is an optional, kind of, it's an incentive tool that, you know, if you would like additional density, there are different tiers of sustainability requirements that you can meet in order to gain access to that additional density. So for the schedule on this one, we took this proposal to NAAP on October 11th. Relatively, I don't think there were any questions, just other than a comment that, you know, for the commercial code, which currently has no sustainability requirements, you know, this is, you know, a decent jump up to, up to lead gold. We're here at the ZOCO meeting, next Wednesday, we'll be going to the Form Based Code Advisory Working Group. We will be visiting C2 E2 in December. The county board will consider this request to advertise in December, and then on to the planning commission and the county board in February for final consideration. So with that, happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you. Any comments? Any questions?
Obviously something that's necessary, because this is always a gap in Form Based Code, or one of the gaps.
Yeah.
I do have a question for the usage of optimization usage. I know it's an annual, or at least I saw that it was an annual. How do you, is that sort of a self-reporting, or do you guys, how would that actually work in practice?
So I'd have to look a little more closely at our current condition language, but this would be implemented through, like, that's how we would enforce it, is through condition language. So I'm not sure how that's worked in past projects. We currently have that language as part of site plan approvals that opt into the green building incentive policy. Matt, I don't know if you've had any.
Yeah, I think what this is usually based on is establishing a baseline once the building comes online, and then kind of working, always to kind of compare the utilization of, you know, energy and other sources to that first year. And I think that helps us, you know, monitor, but only through an agreement and willingness by the property owner or management company to make that data available.
I'll make a few comments. I think this is really, I'm glad you guys are working on this, this is really good. This is sort of like the flat tire analogy, you know, it's a small increment, but it's, when implemented, it has huge impact on the environmental sort of energy requirements. I'm really eager to hear what E2, C2 will have to say, and I'm guessing that one of the recommendations they might make is to add sort of the D, you know, on the renewable energy section language, and that might be not really our bailiwick here, but to add this idea of like fossil fuels or eliminating fossil fuels and make that a large incentive. Yeah, and I, you know, I take a lot of, actually, Commissioner Tellman and I were really excited the other day at a ZOCO meeting where we were talking about sewer lines, and how our water usage has progressively gone down, even though our population has gone up, you know? And I'm hoping that as we start to, or continue to really require it, and, you know, and up the game on our environmental energy efficiency building, so we'll see a similar sort of diagram where, you know, as population grows, our energy use will continue to go down, or hopefully start going down, I'm not sure where it is now, come to think of it. But, so, I think, yeah, I, I don't have anything else to say, I'm just really excited about this, and I'm glad that you guys are, are working on it. And I, I, I might try to attend the E2 C2 in December, just to listen in, because I think, you know, they will also, they always have good feedback on some of this stuff.
They are technically, they, they know this stuff inside of them, so be prepared.
Yeah. Oh, and the other talking point that I'm saying is, and I think you actually referred to it, you know, building better buildings means they're literally cheaper, right? And this is particularly with affordable housing and affordability of living in Arlington, like, if we have more efficient, better built buildings, you know, more people can spend less money on their housing, right? So that is also, should be part of our agenda on the housing front. Okay, now I will get down to my sofa. No, I'm chair, I get to sit. I think that's it then. Do we have anything else on the agenda?
No.
I think that's all I had to. With that, I will, we don't have any public comment, suey? I don't see anyone signed up. If there are any public comments, please raise your hand, or let us know. Nope, nobody signed up. All right, with that, we are out of here before 8 o'clock, so that's a pretty productive meeting. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, everyone that came to the meeting. Thanks, Karen, for saving our meeting at the last minute, so we didn't have to cancel. But, and thank you, staff, for the great presentation and the excellent work, and we will see you next month.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, goodnight.